Open the, thank you, October 2nd Rockport School Committee meeting. For the record, we're going to go around and introduce ourselves again. I know we just did that, but now we'll do it on camera. We'll start with you, Lasso. Who you are, where you're from.
Hello, my name is Lassannando. I'm a senior at Rockport High School and I live in Gloucester. I've been in the Rockport school system for, since first grade. So I've been here for quite a bit and I know the school system relatively well. This is my first year on any sort of governing body and I've been really enjoying it. And I find that I have a passion for politics and so it's a great opportunity to be here. Collectively with our Student Advisory Committee, we bring up topics that are-
We're going to wait until all the introductions and I'll come back to you for what happened today.
Sounds good. That is me.
Jess Delisi, School Committee.
Amy Oakes, School Committee.
Mark Branko, Superintendent Schools.
Kathy Riley, Chair.
Nicole L. Tierrey, Vice Chair.
Mark Lorenz, School Committee Member.
Has everybody had a chance, we'll move on to the first item. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the September 18th meeting? Jess, you were absent. Yeah, any questions on those minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
I have a second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. It does not appear that we have anybody here for public comment, so we'll move through that. Any correspondence, Dr. Branko?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any donations?
Not at this time.
Okay. Personnel.
So we have two personnel updates. We'd like to welcome Paula Donnelly to our district, hired as the interim Rockport Middle High School Special Education Facilitator. And we'd like to welcome Kathleen Heel, who was hired as a paraprofessional at the Rockport Elementary School. So, welcome to both of them.
Thank you. And so next we'll move on to our Student Advisory Committee Representative Lasso and hear their report.
So at our meetings, me and the Student Advisory Committee, we talk about how to engage the student body into taking a real interest in higher education and learning more, being involved, caring about the school system, as well as being a leader for all grades. If you're an upperclassman, being involved enough to show the lowerclassman that, you know, high school, you go somewhere after high school. So really encouraging that school education involvement. We talk about the importance of involving yourself and we collaborate on just, you know, what we think are prominent issues to resolve. A lot of these issues can have pretty complex solutions, which are a little bit hard to resolve. You know, it's hard to change a school from the student body, but I think that that is what is so powerful about us, is that we work together, put our heads together, and create solutions that we bring to the adults in power. So, we've been doing good work, making, creating good ideas, and we hope to see some action. We've been making good plans, so.
We had a meeting today that Ms. Rose and I attended with you and your other four members. And we had a couple big, we call them problems of practice, that were kind of coming out of your group. So we had two or three kind of big areas that we talked about focusing on with you. And do you want to hit one or two of those for the committee, just so they know kind of what you were discussing today?
Yeah, sure. So what we were discussing today was getting the upperclassman involved with the lowerclassmen. So having more involvement for those students, such as freshman seminar, having student, upperclassmen part of NHS, do more talking and along with tutoring. The tutoring system this year has taken a bit of a turn because it's been getting more involved. It's been improving. There have been changes to our schedule this year, so seeing, we hope to encourage upperclassmen to be more involved with lowerclassmen to increase motivation for students that may struggle. We also talked about-
Talked about raising the bar for all students, right? Which was a fascinating conversation.
Yeah. So encouraging, encouraging students to try their best because some students may, you know, they, it's normal to not really see the point of school sometimes. And we want to encourage students that there's a place to go for everybody after you leave high school. And especially coming from a senior, you know, I see different things than I did when I was a freshman, and I think that's completely normal. And so it's, it's hard to communicate to that, to youngerclassmen sometimes, because, you know, they're younger. So, so finding out ways to involve upperclassmen to create more of a community where we all help each other. It's not just freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. You know, we're all the student body. And being a senior, being a senior, it, I have to deal with the fact that with the solutions that we make, whatever changes that we make to the school this year, I will not see. But I'm okay with that because I do believe in helping the younger student body and ensuring that they, that Rockport stays the amazing community that it is. So I'm looking forward to that. I know a lot of the juniors especially, and I think that they're an awesome group of kids, that will lead next year very, very well.
The last thing you talked about was kind of focusing on the library spaces, like the hub of the school and trying to create that more of a-
Yeah. So the library, a lot of students don't feel that it's the most inviting place, just because it's been a little neglected. So working on, you know, having the library be the hub of education for any school, really. It's always library built and then ground up, you know, from the library. So having some, a little bit of more extra attention, extra attention on the library space, because as of right now, it's not the most inviting. There's not enough study spaces, study spaces, a little loud. iPhone policy maybe made it a little less appealing because kids like to go in there and chill, but it really is a place for study. And we want to make it inviting, somewhere that people can be tutored, have extra help after school. Cleaning it up a bit would, would help. Go to the library, get some work done, especially for the kids who have a little bit more trouble with, you know, work ethic. And I think that if we work on solutions to improve the library, it could overall help the education and motivation for all students at Rockport.
Awesome. Thank you.
The one thing I will say is that the power of the voice that you have as a senior or as a peer is way stronger. We've seen it in years and years and in our families too, that the siblings counsel the siblings and they are more willing to listen to their peers than you even think. So how everybody behaves, how everybody treats, how a senior treats a freshman, or even a fourth grader, it sticks with you. I've heard it from my daughter and over and over again, that one of the reasons she tries to be so inclusive, or tried when she was in drama, was there was a group of students that when she started, it was, they were very, very inviting. And that just passes down. So being willing to listen and to be willing to offer advice, it may look like nobody's listening, but they remember that. It's really powerful.
I would also say it's so important to us as a committee to hear a student voice on a regular basis. You gave a really lovely report tonight and I want to encourage you to encourage the other students on your committee to take advantage of this time. We may not always say very much, but I promise we're listening very, very carefully. And we all know that the most important thing that we do is we share our voices on behalf of the one group in this system that doesn't have a very loud voice usually, and that is students. Our job is to speak for students. So to the extent that you come, or you send somebody else from the committee and you speak up, it helps us speak up for you. So thanks for coming.
You're welcome. And I completely agree. I, the other member, other three members, or no, other two members that are in my grade, they participate in the drama program and they've got a really cool play going on right now. But I have encouraged everyone to go. Me and Henry Parker, very excited. We like this sort of political sort of standing. But I, I agree that everybody should come on the council. It's a good experience.
Thank you very much. Next up is the Policy Subcommittee update.
So the Policy Subcommittee continues to be really busy. So I think Mr. Lorenz is going to take us on our little ride and talk through what we've been doing, but I tried to put it all in one slide, just so we'd finally have a cheat sheet. And so if you want to just take us through what's been going on today?
Yeah, well, just really brief, and then if you have, if you'd like more details, just please ask. So first, the new business we did, today we met as a Subcommittee and started our review of Section I. So we made good progress on that section. In terms of the unfinished business we have, requesting a first read, there were a total, and I think this slide, like you mentioned, does a great job of laying out which policies they were and a brief overview of them. There were eight policies total. Six of them we'd like to move to do a first read, and then two of them we'd like to drop. So I'm not sure if we want to go through, how we want to go through those, or just leave it on the slide there?
Thank you.
What's that?
Nothing.
Okay.
We'll go faster.
If you remember, these policies were held over from our review last year with those sections, where we needed more information. So we held these policies. So that information's been received and we've updated these policies to reflect that information. Do you want to add?
And, and so just so that everyone's on the same page, our practice is to bring the policies to you for a first read, and then in two weeks at our next meeting, or whenever our next meeting is, we would come back with these same policies for a second read, which is a vote. And so, just so that we don't catch people by surprise, our practice is that we do our best to read these things before we come to the meeting, so if we have some questions, we can answer them. But we will come back one more time to actually vote on them. So we're not asking for a vote tonight, we're just letting you know. They're, we think they're ready, and this is your first read, and then we'll come back one more time.
So just, so that everybody understands what I just did in the slide, for some reason my computer's not letting me delete my typo. So BHD is actually not in the first read that you're going to make the motion for. BHD and GDD are in the second motion that you'll make to vote them out of the book. So what we're looking for tonight is a first read on ADC, BEDH, GBED, GBEE, GBGE, and GCRD. So that's the first read.
My question is, we're voting to drop BHD and GDD? So then in essence, we are getting rid of them?
So you're making a motion tonight, to seek a motion to accept the-
This is the first read.
As a first read. So you could do that first. Yep.
Okay. I will see if anybody has any questions or anything.
Yeah, right.
And then, okay, then we'll get to the next thing. So did, so I guess we're at the point. Are we, Amy?
I think so. I think, rather than just giving you letters, which is like alphabet soup, and the letters are used across the state by every single school committee in the state, and maybe even nationally. We've tried to help you and help ourselves with the notes below here. So for instance, BHD, Community Relations, we don't need it. We're not trying to take you by surprise and make important things go away. When we drop something, we're dropping something because it's redundant, or it doesn't actually belong in policy. It's something that belongs in a manual. It's an operational thing. It doesn't rise to the level of policy. So we found that to be the case with two policies. The second one is Staff Support and Vacation Days. And this is one where the reason that we held it over and had to come back is because we had to talk to our legal counsel, right? And so the attorneys say, drop this policy because you spell all of this out in your collective bargaining agreement and in other contracts. So sometimes we're getting rid of things because it's repetitive. Sometimes we're getting rid of things because the information appears somewhere else and it actually doesn't belong in the policy manual. Mostly what we're doing is we're making very small revisions to make our policies align with the model policies that are used around the state.
And just as a reminder, the information that's on this slide is also on each policy at the top, under the draft notes, highlighted in blue. So that's always one of the first places I go to when I'm starting to do a read on the policies, is the draft notes, which come through the Subcommittee in our work with our consultant with MASC.
And then the last thing I would say, for the benefit of people who haven't been through this conversation before, our Policy Subcommittee meetings are open meetings. They are announced in advance, they're held on Zoom, and if somebody were extremely interested, they could certainly join the meeting by Zoom, just as we do. It's a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, I did have one question.
Yep.
That I'm sure it is simple, and I just didn't understand. This is why I'm no longer on the Policy Committee. And I'm trying to find it. Okay, I'll just say that it is BEDH. I believe that it was noted, like on the top, that it may be changing through the state.
Right.
So it's being held off. Has it already been changed and it was incorporated in?
It has not, and the recommendation is to accept it, and then if the state makes a change, we'll come back and have to update the policy, but not to hold it hostage, so to speak, because the state moves pretty slowly sometimes.
Okay. Okay, so I did notice that this is different than how I understand public comment to be in our town, in this town. Are we changing, or is this just really how it has worked, but we've done so very little public comment that, the signing up, obviously, we don't need a sign up.
We will start to use that.
Okay.
Because we want to have a, I mean, because of technology and it's 2024, when we're video recording, we can always go back because we make the person introduce themselves, but it's probably good practice to continue to have it.
Sign in, okay. So, so I say to the committee, are you seeing major differences in this from how we do it? And I only say that because this is one of the few policies that I interact with on a regular basis. Is this mainly how we've been doing it? Are there big changes? Yeah.
I thought there was a change in previously, and maybe I read it today, and maybe I overlooked this, but we had previously said that it had to be something that was on the agenda. And now it's saying, anything that is part, in the school committee purview, if I understand-
Which is the way the law is written, correct.
Yeah. So that's a change.
So that is, it's a, it's a change in-
In our practice.
In our practice, so the policy will reflect the law and the expectation from the state. And then I think there's language on our website that's counter to that policy. So once this goes through, then we'll clean up our website as well. Yep.
Thank you for saying what was in my brain. Thanks. That's exactly the difference that I saw. Thank you. Any other questions?
That's a good question.
Okay, I think I have one more. No, there was one typo in the domestic assault one that you guys will probably catch. On the bottom of the page, it says, anyone instead of any one.
Just give me a policy number. Thank you.
GB. Thanks. How do you know that off the top of your head?
Okay. Where is it in the policy?
It's on the very bottom, and it talks about, you know, usually you would say anyone, but it's any one day or something like that.
Gotcha. I'll go find it.
It's a simple typo.
We'll go find it.
That's it? Okay. So-
So if you could seek a motion to accept the top line A with the exception of the bold.
Right, exactly. So, do we have a motion to accept as a first read ADC, BH, BEDH, GBED, GBEE, GBGE, GCRD as a first read?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Okay. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we will, do I have a motion to drop policy BHD and GDD as recommended?
So moved.
Second? Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And before we move on, Madam Chair, I just want to point out, this is, it is sticky work. Like we, we go back and we find not just the typos, but then we find ourselves wrestling with language, asking thoughtful questions around practical application. I need to make sure I understand them, so we don't trip up on how we apply them. So I mean, some of these conversations are pretty sticky. So I thank and respect the full committee, because it is hard for you to jump in and try to absorb any of this when three of us are digging in and sometimes have to check ourselves three times to make sure that we're in good shape. But again, I thank MASC, we're doing a lot of good work here. And the best part of the story is when we're done and you do a vote in full, you know, you'll have this nice updated policy book, and then we'll just continue to work with MASC on a micro basis, instead of a macro basis, to make sure we're up to date. So, thank you to everybody for their efforts.
Just to clarify, or a question, we'll be doing a second read at the next-
Correct.
-school committee meeting, I guess.
Of these?
Of those.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you. Do you think there'll be a first of any others?
Doubt it. I doubt it.
Okay.
We've got a lot of digging into doing that.
Okay, great. Okay, well, you know what? We should have had you present before. But policy is going much faster these days, is it not?
So we got a, we got a double show a couple weeks in a row. Well, we will hear from Ms. Goodu around our accountability results first, and then she'll come back to us in a couple weeks and give us another update around the actual MCAS results and progress being made. So tonight is that big picture at the accountability level, so I will get out of the way and let you take one.
Yeah, so last time we talked a little bit about what accountability was and how it was determined. And the accountability and the MCAS both came out on the same day publicly. We've just put the MCAS results in the staff hands, so we're not quite ready to present that to you yet, and that's a lot of stuff in one night. So we figured accountability tonight was good, and MCAS next time would be better. We've put together our summary results and can have that in your drive sooner than the rest of the stuff as well, so you can take a look at that. But tonight is just accountability, and the first few slides are kind of repetitive as to what we talked about last time, but just to make sure that if anybody had any other questions as we went through the accountability data, knowing that accountability is not just MCAS, it's all of these different components that make up our accountability results. And then, if you, I'm just going to keep going unless you have, need me to stop, just say so. The next slide, so this is what's being measured, and then the next slide is how a school is classified. This one we talked about pretty in-depth, in showing, you know, all of the categories for not requiring assistance, and then what it means to be requiring assistance from the state. And all of our Rockport schools are in substantial progress towards targets this year with the And just showing you here, when you're looking at where we're at in terms of substantial progress towards targets, we're in that, that 46% of schools are in that substantial progress towards targets, all the schools that were measured. And you had asked a question last time about the 15% who require assistance, and it's not specifically 15%, it's whatever percentage of students fall in this little box that I highlighted for you. Chronically underperforming, underperforming, lowest performing 10%. Those are how they are designated there, and this year it was 18% of schools that fell in that category. And then how the data is measured, we did talk about this last time. I just wanted to make sure that I added it, that there's also the lowest performing students are also classified, so our score in the criterion reference, which is towards our targets, they measure us with all of our students as 50%, and then our lowest performing 25% of students counts as the other 50%. They combine that together to give us that one percentage towards targets. The other percentage is our overall percentile compared to similar schools. And then we talked about the percent assignment, assignments as well, seeing that if you see a two, a two's not terrible. It is improvement. A three is we met our target, and four is exceeded. So that is how the data is measured, and then we're moving right into the actual accountability reports. And this is the overall district. 56th is our progress toward targets for a district they don't give a percentile rank. They only give that for the schools themselves. So the accountability percentile for each school is shown there on the right. And then I did include each school moving forward, so we could take a look at some of the targets. If you had any questions, this is the district overall. So the achievement looks somewhat low, but based on the state data for ELA and math, that's kind of the way the state is trending as well. I can give you more information on that later. The growth is decent. And then our lower performing students actually pulled us up in our progress towards our targets as well. The chronic absenteeism is, we got all of the points, we exceeded our target. That's based mostly on the elementary and middle for that. So this is where we're at as an overall, as a district. And it does make it easier to look at school by school. I'm not sure if we've done it school by school before, but I thought that would be a good place for us to take a look, so that you could see exactly what's happening in each school area. So in terms of the high school, we have the 51% towards our targets, which is still substantial progress right over the 50, and the percentile ranking is the 58th percentile. And just to know that our ELA target was 511, we hit 508. Our math target was 506, we hit 503. Our science target was 498. That's the one where we exceeded, where we got four points. That landed at 501. The physics scores aren't phenomenal, but based on the target set, we're moving from the old bio exam into the new physics exam. So we did get the points for the science achievement and decent points for growth. In terms of the chronic absenteeism across the state, that's a struggling problem still in kindergarten, in students from low-income families, and in high school in general. So our high school target was 18.8%, and we were 22.9. So that's zero points because we actually declined. There were more chronically absent students.
Do you need to define chronically absent?
More than 10% of the school year.
Thank you.
So that's 18 days or more. Unexcused absences, you don't get a break for those, whether they're excused or unexcused, 10, 18 days or more is chronically absent.
So I think that's worth pausing on, because this is a community meeting that goes out that we in our homes tend to differentiate between excused and unexcused, like, well, I wrote a note, or it was a doctor's appointment. The state doesn't care, because you didn't come to school. No different than, good or bad, your boss might not care because you didn't come to work. So while we differentiate in towns all the time in a humanistic way, when we turn in our data, the child was either in the seat or they weren't in the seat. And so I've, I found the state data interesting, that particularly kindergarten, and I mean, I'm not surprised by low income, but I was, I was interested that kindergarten and high school across the state tend to be the places where we're low, and that we're right on pace with the state, which is not necessarily a positive thing to say, but that's that we are.
When would be an appropriate time to ask questions about, like-
At any point, I would think.
Well, I guess more about recommendations or changes that you might be making. So would you rather go through the whole report tonight, and then even the next school committee meeting, and then talk about, or?
For us, it'd be easier if we stayed on accountability.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, and then-
And you guys hit us with questions on accountability, and then we reset to student data at the next meeting.
And then talk about maybe recommendations that you have, or questions that we have about those?
Yeah.
Is that the best time? I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to distract from the data piece of it right now.
Well, I think when we get to the slide two on the takeaways, when we put it in bigger, a bigger perspective, we can definitely talk about certain things there. For the high school in general, Mark, we looked at some data going back and comparatively to 2019, pre-pandemic to now, the rate is really only 3.7% more high school- high school students chronically absent. Talking about our population, that's a low number of students, but it is still a problem, and it's a problem across the state. And there's a lot of stuff out there statewide of things that districts are doing to help improve that. I know last year at the high school specifically, they started to look at attendance from a more positive perspective. And the letters that we are, we have to send out to families when their students hit a certain absence rate are more positive. We really miss your student when they're not here. What can we do to help you get them here? Let's meet and talk about this. Where they used to have the big legal language of, we're taking you to court, right in the very first letter. So, there's been a lot of shift in restorative conversations around.
We can wait till the takeaways and ask more questions about those things. Okay, that was, that's good.
Okay, so the middle school also substantially making progress towards their targets, fifty-four percent, and a sixty-fourth percentile ranking. They are, they were, they, the ELA target was a little bit improved overall. They have these different categories in terms of recovery paths or improvement paths. So, it, the ELA target was pretty close. The math target was less than one percent away from where we needed to be for the scaled score. And the science target, we exceeded. There's no points there, so I'm gonna have to look that up again. But our science, we actually exceeded what our target was. It was five-oh-three, and we hit five-oh-five. So, I'd have to go back and check those points out to see what happened there. But we have good growth scores again, and three out of the four points for chronic absenteeism, that means they met their target on chronic absenteeism. Oh, and I know why, because I'm looking at elementary. Just back to middle.
Oh, sorry.
Um, no, I'm sorry.
This slide doesn't show those, um, those raw scores, the scale scores.
No, but if, when you, if you see there's three tabs in each report, this is all public data. Anyone can look at this data, and if you click on that detailed data for each indicator, that gives you all those scaled, those raws, there's targets, those differentials. The, the ELA and the math and the science were all down, which is something that, when I share some MCAS oversight at the end, eighth grade science across the board was lower, and fifth and tenth were better. So, just a state trend as well. And the elementary is the one that kind of looked better point-wise. It's sixty-first percentile, seventy percent towards their targets. It's funny, if you play, play around this, and you go look at some of the schools of recognition, those are actually better scores than some of the scores that schools of recognition got. But it has to do with improvement towards targets and the lowest performing group as well. So, how they picked those fifty schools is, you know, that's why the commissioner looks at that and picks out the schools that he's looking at. But the elementary school exceeded, improved and exceeded their target for ELA, improved for math, and exceeded in science. So, they did a really good job there with the achievement scores. Growth is decent, and exceeded the target in chronic absenteeism. So, we closed the gap more in the elementary school than anywhere else.
Back to that first slide that talked about the fifty percent, about how the?
You just kept telling me which one.
Yeah, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Can you just explain that again, that all students fifty percent are the lowest performing?
So, in that piece where you're looking for the scoring between zero and four points, they take all students in the school and measure them against the target. And the targets for achievement are based on the, an average scaled score on a MCAS test. So, that is fifty percent of your score is all students. Then they have determined your lowest-performing students, lowest performing twenty-five percent based on the year before. So, we do know who those students are ahead of time. And then they are grouped together, and their score counts for the other fifty percent. And that's how they come up with the progress towards targets.
My understanding is that's an attempt to address and document how people are or aren't closing the achievement gap, right? Which is why they weigh that, that lowest-performing student equally.
And then another question I have from the chair.
Well, and on top of that, remember that forty percent of our score is the improvement from last year. Sixty percent is the improvement from this year. So, it's not all about just this year. So, if last year was better, that brings us up. If last year was worse, that brings us down.
I feel like you're trying to get in.
I have a question about how much this data might show wide swings because we have such a very small student population. If we had four thousand students in our middle school, my guess is that we would see fewer shifts from year to year because we know that very small numbers magnify, very small numbers of students magnify the effect that we see when we start to track progress over time or percentile rankings. Is it possible that our very small numbers might have something to do with some of the swings we see in this data?
Absolutely. And especially when you look at the high school level where they take dropout rate into consideration. One student dropping out is a much higher percent for us than for someplace else, you know? Percentage of students taking advanced courses, it's gonna be, you know, it's a huge difference. We're hoping that taking a good look at how we're coding courses and making sure our project lead the way for eleventh and twelfth graders are noted as an advanced course, making sure those APs are recorded the right way, that the percentage of students taking those make a difference too. But I think it makes a big difference in the chronic absenteeism as well. I think Lasson has a?
I don't really have a question. I just thought it would be interesting to share my perspective. So, I'm just trying to take all of this in. Seeing all this data is foreign to me because I'm aware, just as Amy said, that we have a very small student body. But when I see this data, you know, I, I understand that this is data and test scores and, you know, necessities for the, for the statewide education program. But when I see all these percentages and scores, I think of the, the individual students. You know, like, it doesn't really matter what the percentage is. Like, all these students all have their own, like, struggles and personal goals. And, like, I, I understand that this is data, but I want to kind of step back for a second and just kind of realize that, like, the student body, it's all, it's all just people. So?
I love what you're saying. What makes accountability difficult, and I'm gonna turn right back over to you. What makes accountability difficult, it's this big data picture where the state is asking us to basically create statewide profiles of how we're doing at the, at the, at the macro level. In two weeks, Ms. Goodu will come back, we're gonna talk, we can't talk about students by name, but we'll be talking about student profiles, and we'll be talking about growth and achievement at the student level. And that to us is that, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road in a district like Rockport.
Yeah.
We want to make sure kids by name are demonstrating growth and achievement. Good or bad, we have to take this data in the way it's reported and disseminate it to the best of our ability. But in two weeks, if you happen to be sitting here again, you'll, you'll hear a much more student-slanted presentation.
Yeah. And I'm, I am appreciating all of the, all of their percentages, and I totally understand that there are requirements, and I'm not, like, saying, these are just people. Like, stop with the percentages. I understand that it's a requirement. I'm just sharing my?
Yeah, thank you.
Something else for you to know is this data is more this-level data. And at the high school, I don't know if you know, there's, there's one teacher who is the coordinator for social studies. So, he helps run that department. There's one for math. So, they're the people that we look at this, so we can look at that ELA achievement and figure out, okay, which student grow, group do we target with support or intervention during win block to help us get over the hump of that little two percent di, percentile differential? But the MCAS data that Dr. Branco is talking about, that's what all of the teachers are spending time with now, moving forward. And not so much because we care so much about the score, but because we care about the students and making sure who needs what they need gets what they need. And looking at that, there are definitely students in the high school who need significant support to actually pass the MCAS despite being there for four years and passing all their classes, to be able to get that diploma at the end. And like Dr. Branco said, this is more, this ranks Rockport across the state, so everyone in the state sees how we're doing. It's also part of what came across politically that we can look at this based on a teacher and judge a teacher by their performance from what the MCAS scores say. So, good, bad, or indifferent, it's, it's something that's still out there that we do have to look at.
Those core teachers, they communicate with you, you guys?
Mm-hmm. Yep, they meet with their, their specific department at least once a month, and then they meet during that flex explore block as well. And then I meet with them twice a month with Mrs. Rose and/or Dr. Branco to talk about all this stuff and help plan things.
As a student, I must say, it is kind of weird having that sort of cloud hanging over all of the teachers that, you know, any bad grade or failing grade reflects them, even though it is the student usually in, in control. You can complain about as many teachers as you want, but it is, it's this weird aroma that all, you know, students have to pass to have a certain amount of, you know, to have the teacher have a good?
So, I, let me just clarify. I think what Ms. Goodu was saying is that that's the perception out there across the state. Sadly, there's always been, since the MCAS, when did Ed Reform hit? Nineteen ninety-three, right? So, nineteen ninety-three in Massachusetts, all, all of this standardized stuff shifted on us with graduation requirements similar to other states. And there has always been this perception from different pockets of individuals that you can use this data, let's say, for evil instead of for good, right? And so, we in, in our district, and in most of the districts I've been involved with, the hope is you're using standardized data to help move teaching and learning forward on the sake of kids, not to use it negatively to judge the district or the adults in charge. So, it's, it's one data point
Yep.
over a ten to two, ten-day to two-week period of time. And we have lots of other data points all year long with assessments in classrooms and, and are built into our curriculum. So, I, I want to just make sure it's really clear that that's not how it's used. Right now, it's just being used by the state as an accountability system to make sure school districts are, in the state's opinion, moving forward in a way that they're happy with. I'm gonna jump to your last slide too, if you want me to.
Yeah, and I think you're dating yourself. I think it was two thousand and three, that it was a graduation requirement.
Right.
Started in ninety-eight, two thousand, you're just, yeah.
Whenever.
Yeah, it had ten years.
Added ten years to my life.
I think these systems exist so that the adults hold themselves accountable for the achievement of every single student. And that's why this is a system that waits the achievement of our lowest performing students is because it wants the adults to have a relentless focus on what's happening. And for us, it's never our intent to think about whether individual teachers have done a great job or not. It's our obligation, and we take it really seriously to have these conversations so that we have a budget that supports professional development for teachers. We have a master schedule that provides time for reteaching and getting help. We have a library that creates an environment that allows students to go and work together. Every school committee in America practically has to contend with an accountability system and with the data about student achievement. And so, every year, we go through this exercise trying to think about what do we do to support our teachers and our students and our administrators so that people feel empowered to keep working on behalf of systems and, and students. But, but, but don't, don't get too wrapped around the axle about, well, this is green, this is yellow, this is red. In some states, it can be blue, red, yellow, green. It's incredibly complex. And, and that's why we talk about how do we continue to support teachers? And if you could wave a magic wand, what would you like to make construction better? Or how many in-service days do you have, and how much time do you have? And what can we do to support the work that helps teachers do the work they want to do to help students? So, I think we see this as sort of part of our job. Yeah. It's a lot of numbers, though. It's blinding.
So, I just pulled out some of what I thought were the key takeaways from this data because it is a lot of data. And it's, the way they weight everything and sort everything together makes this more difficult to look at from a, a student perspective than the MCAS that has names attached to it. But just looking at us as a district overall, all three schools were substantial progress towards targets. There was improved or better growth for all grade levels, and the lowest performing students met, met their growth targets. In terms of the high school, the science achievement exceeded target, the math growth exceeded target, and the extended engagement rate exceeded target. The two areas that are of concern are the ELA and the math achievement declined overall. That's an overall average of the tenth-grade students who took those tests. And the chronic absenteeism, we already talked about, we know that that got worse as well in the high school. For the middle and the elementary combined, they exceeded the target for improving chronic absenteeism. That's a different score. It's the three-to-eight score. When you split them together, that's, it's a little bit different. But for the middle school, the ELA growth, the lowest-performing students exceeded their target. And we exceeded the target for chronic absenteeism for those lower performing students, not for the overall group. Unfortunately, the achievement overall average scaled score declined in all three areas. And then the elementary looked, looks really, really good. The science achievement was exceeding target. The lowest-performing students exceeded their math achievement target. The, the lowest-performing students at the elementary did really well in a bunch of areas you can see there. And then we, the school as a whole exceeded their target for improving the chronic absenteeism as well. So, I think there's a lot of good takeaways from here, but I think a major focus here is looking at those achievements with the MCAS data that we get out of here to help figure out how to make that better. And Lasson, like, I'm the person who loves the MCAS data because the MCAS data can help me see, okay, which standards areas are we falling down in, which domains of science? And that helps us know who are we buying new science programs for, you know? Who are we putting into support positions to help students who need help? So, that's how the data helps us, as well as the politicians who put it in play as an accountability system.
I also think, go ahead.
I was just gonna say earlier too, that over the years, hearing this, I think this is, I don't know, my seventh, eighth year, hearing the MCAS presentation. But I feel like what I have heard, when you've also come back to sort of let us know what happened with the data, is that hearing that the teachers really use this data on the individual student level and find it helpful, and, you know, maybe you see that, oh, my gosh, teaching fractions this way, like, everybody was, you know, missing the fractions questions or whatever. So, I think that I've really appreciated, in my mind, I thought of the MCAS as this big bad thing prior to coming on the school committee, and these presentations have really helped me appreciate the way that you and the teachers use the data in a helpful way, and the way that, you know, it helps students is really kind of what, what sticks in my mind year after year. So, I think, and that's good, and you'll see if you come back, or Henry, or whoever, it's a little more humanized when we talk about the, the individual student achievement.
I know I sound like a broken record, but I want us to continue to remember that the, the very small numbers of students in our system make these numbers swing. So, if we have fifty students in the class of two thousand and twenty-six, and five of them have lower scores, that's a ten percent drop. Two students is, it, every student matters, but the fewer students we have, the more these numbers will swing around. Oh, here comes the math teacher. Thank you.
No, I, I, I agree, and I hear that, and I think it's important to recognize that. But I think we have to be consistent when we say that, and say that when we have growth and achievement, it works on that end as well. It's the same thing.
Yeah.
So, I think we just have to be consistent when we, when we recognize that.
So, that's where I was gonna take us, is that this has always been my bugaboo between accountability data and MCAS achievement and growth data, right? The accountability data is apples to oranges. It's a combination of different cohorts of students over a certain amount of years, depending how they decide to slice it and dice it. Whereas, we have the cohort data. So, while it, while ELA, math, and science achievement decline, that's comparing different groups of kids to different groups of kids. When Ms. Goodu comes back, she'll be able to show you like we did last year, the cohort, we'll be able to see the fourth grade move to fifth grade, move to sixth grade. That is, to me, just more meaningful as an educator, as a parent, as a school leader, to still to say, listen, we know this group of kids we know this group of kids by name, and generally speaking, the group flatline, but we know five of them grew exponentially. They might, that still might be buried in the flatline, right? So yes, it, you're both singing the same song, with just, you know, different parts of it, really. Like, it's, there's a lot of moving parts to this. The accountability is one, you know, one necessary in, in, in the big puzzle. And I'm also a big advocate for local, state, and nationally normed data. We've had that, we've had a lot of those conversations with the principals the past couple of years. This is the snapshot of the state data. We do the national data when we do our Galileo and other processes that we have normed across. And then we have our homegrown curriculum that gives us the local. So, you know, people who are watching or paying attention, if, if we're, if we're looking at student data from all three levels, particularly because our numbers are small, we should be able to do good work with kids and, and impact growth, so.
And one of the reasons why I wanted to separate the accountability.
Yeah.
From the MCAS too. And last year's 10th grade, there were 49 students tested, so.
Do you want to look at that last slide now?
Before you go to the next one, just another question on that slide. Explain a little bit about how, like, for instance, the math at the high school, the math growth exceeds target, but at math achievement is declined. So can you talk a little about the difference between the two?
The math achievement is the scaled, the average scaled score for all students who took that math MCAS. So with 500 being that cutoff, it's wherever that fell, that is the achieve, it's just an average of the performance. The growth is, again, that student growth percentile of those students compared to like students from the year before.
So essentially like the, the SGP.
It is, that is what that is. That's the SGP, yep. So they're using achievement, and they're using growth from the MCAS to be part of this accountability. And then we did have our webinar with the acting commissioner who gave us some results about the MCAS. So the top is from there. That is, he told us the ELA results for the whole state in all grades is lower this year. It's not significantly lower. They still believe we're coming out of the decline from the pandemic, but it is still lower than it was last year. The math results only improved in third grade. And then the rest was kind of a little bit up and down, bumpy across the state. The science results improved in grades five and 10 and lower in grade eight. That's state data, that's not just generally based on us, but we kind of followed the pattern, pattern when we look. That was my Gloucester accent, did you hear it? But the other thing is just data for us is the class, the class of 26 state, 78% of students achieved at least the EPP, which is what you need to have to be able to pass the MCAS to get a diploma in all subject areas. So they do not have to retake. So that's the, that 10th grade class, it's lower than it was the year before, but 78% passed. That's still low when you're talking about such a high stakes test that you need to pass all three of these to get a diploma, even though you're doing all the other requirements. But that is the state level, the data there. According to, on us, we'll present more on this in depth. But in terms of the high school, ELA did decent. It was a little higher in achievement and growth. The math growth was higher, and the intro to physics achievement was lower than the state.
And I know you're going to give a detailed presentation in two weeks, but I just don't want people to over underreact to bullet points. Remember, there's always an implementation dip in most cases when you, when you do something new. And we move to physics first. So there, there's a predictable implementation dip there. So we're going to watch that carefully. You're working with the science department to make sure we understand that we have fidelity of implementation.
Yeah, and first year of the course and first year of the test. So we didn't even implement the course and give it a couple of years before we had them take the MCAS. So just shift from bio. And again, these are just quick snippet trends. The only person that this is coming from is me. We've just put this into the hands of the staff. So this is just my overall perception, you know, looking at the results with Mark and putting the summary together. Seventh grade was fabulous in ELA. Strong achievement and growth, significantly higher than the state. Eighth grade science was, even though the state was lower, our eighth grade science was higher achievement. And then there was just, you know, jumpy, sporadic in the other grades, just like the state as well. I can't see through Kathy's head. In the fifth grade, fifth grade had really strong achievement in all subject areas, higher than the state. Weaker growth in ELA. And then the math grades had lower achievement than the state. So these are things that every teacher now has the data in their hands and the coordinators that I was speaking about. So they're going to work on analyzing this. They have an analysis protocol, they have department time. They're going to be able to look at all of this data, break it down, meet with me, and Mark and I can look at their results while we put together that presentation for you for next time. Yes.
So I'm looking at all of this, like, oh, higher than the state, lower than the state. Please tell me if you don't want me to ask this now, but I understand that there is a possibility of the MCAS not being required for graduation, if that's a state question or if that's for local. I, I really cannot tell you, I forget, but.
So it's a ballot question coming up in November, and.
For the, for the state of Mass? Okay, yeah.
And so we'll see how things play out in November.
Cool.
That's the best answer I can give you publicly.
Okay. Nice.
No, I actually met Jody. So as we shift, Madam Chair, you have, I put this all together in one slide, hopefully that worked for you guys last time. So I'd like to thank Ms. McAuliffe and Ms. Stein, who are our student council advisors at the middle school. This is something that Mr. Rodman had brought to the district a couple of years back with the New England Middle Schools running a middle school leadership conference up at Southern New Hampshire University. Fantastic program, we had really good feedback the past year or two that we've done this. So because it's out of state, this requires a school committee approval. So you've got kind of the agenda and the overview on the right-hand side of the slide. And then I asked the teachers for a little bit of info, just so that you know what you're approving. So there are two chaperones running the trip. We select five students, which is the way that conference works. They'll be traveling by our minibus. And then the registration costs are covered by student council. So once you've had time to either review this or ask me any questions, at the end, we'll have a motion, hopefully.
Do you think it'd be possible for us to hear from the students when they return about how they bring it back to the middle school?
Yeah, they want to do that, I think. I think they want to come back and talk about how, what they learned can be implemented.
Yes, exactly.
At our school council.
Love to hear that.
Awesome, okay.
Great. Any other questions? I assume everybody had the chance, okay. Do I have a motion to approve this out-of-state trip as presented?
So moved?
A second? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Great. Looks fun. Okay, communication advocacy.
So this is our second time having communication and advocacy on the agenda. As I stated earlier, I think maybe every other meeting or so, we can just kind of roll this out. So I wanted to remind ourselves of what the school committee goal was, what some of those key actions were. And my hope, after I present a couple of things to you tonight, is that the chair could facilitate some kind of conversation regarding actionable first steps related to number five. So that this would be an opportunity to just sort of publicly brainstorm a little bit around what we think some of these plans around partnering with the community to garner support for funding or best understand the expectations. So I'll go through the slide that I have put together, and then I'll turn it over to you, and you guys can just have. And again, it can be, my, my thought on this, and you can go wherever you'd like, my thought on this is that you kind of have a nice conversation strictly about that key action five. And then that'll allow me to come back to the leadership team and say, this is what the school committee's thinking. These are some of the things they're brainstorming. And then I can come back to you again with what makes the most sense for how to actualize that. Does that make sense?
Okay.
So I just wanted you to see some of the things that we've been working on. We took our strategy for district improvement. And we are very fortunate that Lori McNiff, who is in central office administrative assistant, who works primarily with special education and the business office, also has a graphic arts background. So my mentor, Chris, calls it getting a toufa. That's her Gloucester accent coming in. So we kind of get a tuffer in this because Lori's got some skill sets. So what we put together is, this ties to our NEASC accreditation. It ties to putting our communication forward to letting everybody within our learning community really know what, what our vision and core values are. So we recognize that the strategy is eight pages long, dense, and not really like a talking point, commercial, user-friendly thing. So she's drafted that up. We grabbed the anchor as our symbol because we really feel like we're anchored in this vision and core values. So there's a little branding there. And then those are four by six.
Poly.
Yeah, poly, like polycarved it basically, right? And so they will be see-through, mounted up on walls. So there'll be one in each lobby, one lobby of the elementary school, one in the lobby of the middle high school, like, one in the lobby of the, of central office. And then we're making large laminated poster style ones that will be in all of the learning areas, the common areas. So while it looks like, you know, while it looks like PR, it's, to us, it's really important. Like, teachers use these things as teachable moments, as teaching tools and instructional tools all the time. So you can see teachers having that as a reference in their classroom when something's going on. And when we're talking about high expectations in the classroom, we're talking about what it means to have a sense of belonging in your history class. We want it everywhere from K to 12. And if you recall, when we went through this work together a couple of years ago, we, we took painstaking efforts as a leadership team with surveys from faculty and community members to make sure that these core values are written in a way that they can be used from the kindergarten all the way to 12th grade level. So thank you to Lori for throwing that together because it was a ton of work, and I have zero artistic skill set. So this is fantastic. The other action that we've taken on your behalf so far is when we came out of your work with Tony Bent. He showed you the Shrewsbury Journal. We talked about our demographics and how we have to have other ways of communicating with our general public in Rockport other than the website and social media because not everybody accesses them. And so we brainstormed titles and came up with "In the Loop" as a draft title. And then Lori has been playing with the rope connected to the anchor, so we have some themes going. So we are working with different printers and publishing people outside of the district to find out what our best efforts will be to kind of replicate that kind of a communication tool. And so I will probably in a month or so have another update on what that's going to start to look like. And then, you know, ultimately, I can see sections, you know, a section from the superintendent, a section from the school committee, and then some school reporting and all that kind of nice stuff that comes out. And our target, ultimately, our target would be four a year. But I think we're going to start modest with maybe two a year this year, just to see how good we get at it. And, and work with the committee to find strategic times of the calendar year to make sure these go out to the public. So thoughts, questions, comments on these two efforts, and then I'll kick it over to you guys.
I was just going to give positive feedback. I love the, I love the logo in the loop, just the meaning behind it and in the, that. The way it looks, really, really good. I really, I love it.
Thank you.
Same, and thank you to Lori for.
Yes.
For putting the work in, she did a great job.
I agree that it looks great. And when I think about two or four times a year sending information out, I think about sending information to every single taxpayer, every family. And then I start to think about the budget implication for producing that kind of stuff in paper. And so if there's anything you need us to do to support you around financial shifts or whatever to make this happen, I think we will.
Great question. I'm happy that the policy subcommittee brought to this committee the conversation around advertising. Because similar to what we could do in theater programs and music programs, I do know that Shrewsbury and some of the other districts I've looked at, they get advertisements, no different than a newspaper would.
Interesting.
And so they offset the cost of whatever the partnership is with the, with the print shop or the producer to, to cover those costs by selling ads for like, you know, ads that come out four times a year, that kind of a thing.
I think it's really great, and I think that there's a story that we want to tell. And it, it might be about achievement, or it might be about finance. It might be about long-term planning. It might be about our efforts to reach out and communicate. I think it's very, very important to get it done. I, I think these posters are really important in classrooms, and I think they both look great. And so I thank you for that work.
Thank you.
I think that, and I know we'll talk more about, you'll come back to us, and we'll talk about what would go in it and what you think, you know, what feedback you're getting from the admin team. But I think one thing to keep in mind is what we heard from all the students that we've had in front of us is in addition to finance and all those things, which of course we want in there, is what makes Rockport a really special place. And hearing that consistently from all the students, I think, was really impactful for us. And so communicating that, you know, to the rest of Rockport that might not have students in the schools, I think, will be really important.
So this is really in its infancy, but we've just started conversations about how student voice can be embedded in this particular kind of publication. So I, I, I think, yeah, you, you need, that, yeah. Whether it's producible art or whether it's an actual article written by a group of students about an experience they had. So we're going to try to keep that alive too.
Well, we were just talking the other day about, I forget what we were talking about. And I was like, well, if I, I wonder where I can find the core values. Like, I can't remember what they ended up being. And then you pulled this up, and I'm like, perfect. Because there's, they are so important, and how do you keep going back to it? And also, my, in my job, we have a blog, and it's called "In the Loop."
I didn't steal it from there.
No, no, you didn't. Our loop is not a rope, our loop is a, like a jeweler's loop that you look through, a magnifying loop, so.
We were going for the infinity symbol, right?
I love it.
Full communication.
I love it.
Just, just for a reminder too, that we have the updated website, right? So if you go to the website, again, this is not everybody's doing this clearly in the community, but for the people that are accessing, you can click on each one of those. And when we rebranded the website, we wanted to make sure that they were prominently displayed right up front. And then you can click on each one of these separately to get that working definition that's in the poster that you have. And again, I fully recognize that not everybody's trolling our websites regularly, but at least it's, at least it's out there. So I'll go back a slide for you, and I will turn it over to you. And if you guys want to just have some kind of brief conversation about, you know, action number five or what you think a few actionable possibilities are that I could listen to and talk about.
Sure, I'm really impressed with the, with the progress on number four. That's amazing. We have talked about also number three and working forward with that. So that's a separate actionable item that we've been working on. But if, in terms of the school committee partnering with the community, I mean, one of the things that we've done before is we're more visible, therefore we're more approachable. We always are, you know, Nicole has the kids, and you guys have the kids in the schools, Jess and Nicole. But the rest of us aren't in the schools as much anymore. People may not find this as approachable, so where are we available to meet people? Again, I don't know, I'm taking, I'll take ideas because we're not, I mean, we're not the main stars. So I don't know if it's the greatest idea to have us spending our time, spending time at different events where people could meet us. Harvest Fest, we used to have a booth at Harvest Fest, or sometimes attend the open, the open.
Open houses.
Open houses, which might be a better, a more, make more sense for the school committee. But there are limits to that, too.
So you have two big, you know, the way, the way we draft is you have two big kind of areas under number five, right? That, that I think, if I heard you correctly over the summer, that you really want to find ways to focus on. How do you work as a committee appropriately to garner support to continue to advocate for, for appropriate funding for the district? And then the second one is long, really long-term, how to get the community to better understand the expectations and needs of maintaining a strong school district. So, you know, other than going out and making nice public appearances, what, what, what are actionable things that could, could take you down that road?
I, I have some I-wonder questions. I do think they're two separate things. I think number two involves listening. It says to understand the expectations and needs of the community. of the community. Number one says to get support. That's different from just listening. And I think that if we looked around the state at school districts that knew that their enrollment was declining, we might see different school committees and school districts with different strategies. I, I think we probably need to do more than stand behind a desk or a table at a community event. And I wonder whether in Rockport, we have ever had an ad hoc committee or a task force focused on this kind of a conversation. I'm not aware of what efforts might have been made at the school committee level the last time there was an election. I wonder if it would be great for us to understand literally what our school committee members allowed to do and not allowed to do. And can, can a school committee put together a task force to work for a year or so on gathering community support, spreading the word? I think the elephant in the room in Rockport is what is going to happen as our enrollment declines, and how will we preserve a school system here? And that's what I think number one is in Section Five. And I, I think it takes focus and courage to do that and to, to put it right out there.
I was going to say that I think that number one is a school committee issue. Like, I think that we should lead the way on it, and we should find out what roles legally we can take in doing that. But the, the future of our school system in Rockport in general is not just a school committee issue. It's a town-wide issue. And how do we engage the select board, the finance committee, whoever else, the planning board, I don't know who, who else it would be in this conversation and in the process. So, how do we kind of find out moving forward? What's, and there really, no, there has not been, there has been no ad hoc committee, no task force. There was some movement between the town and the schools to look into affordable housing at one point, or workforce housing. But other than that, there has been no formalized discussion about it.
I, I think kind of, just extending what, what you were saying, I think we really need to do proactive outreach. So, not the traditional, you know, coffee with the superintendent or coffee with the school committee, but proactive outreach. And maybe that's targeted focus groups, you know, be holding focus groups, you know, sort of similar when you first came into the district, something similar to that, with different community groups, different community members, you know, people with kids in the school system, people who don't have kids in the school system, and, you know, have very specific questions that we're trying to find out people's, you know, thoughts and where they're at right now. Because I think one of the only ways, you know, we could probably make some guesses, but, you know, going forward, I think, you know, if we have outreach and we're communicating with the community, it'd be nice to know kind of what they're looking for or what their, where their thoughts are. And so, we could really have that, that targeted outreach. So, I, I'd love to see us work towards doing something like that, you know. Another thing is, and this is very basic, but I note that at the next MASC conference, there's at least two, I think maybe three workshops that specifically address number five. So, I think it would be very important for, you know, a member of the committee to attend those sessions, just to gather more information, see what other districts are doing.
The other thing they have at the conference that I went to a couple of years ago, I think it's on Friday, is they had the region meetings. So, we got to meet with the other districts and whatever that were in our, am I saying region? Am I saying that? Is that the correct term?
Yeah.
That were in our region and got to talk together because this isn't just a Rockport problem. This is, like you said, there's other school districts out there, and it's a, it's a problem across the state other than maybe the gateway cities. So, that was, that could also be another place where we bring that forward. And what are other people doing? What is happening in your community? What is, so that could be another opportunity at the conference to actually talk.
I, I imagine that people in our community expect us to think about this, and they expect us to talk about this. And they expect us to pay attention and to be ready and to include their voice and to be leaders and to have ideas and to build bridges to town committees and other groups in our community that are also interested in this, not to jump to conclusions, but to really genuinely explore and to learn as much as we can. We do not have an emergency. We have time to have a great discussion. And we have a wonderful superintendent who's very knowledgeable, who can, I am sure, tell us a whole lot about what's happening around the state. I, I think we just, we just need to say, this is something that's really important, and we're going to take it on, and we're going to start to talk about it. And I'm not sure exactly how we do it, but I have felt for the past year and a half, like, we weren't even sure that we should actually talk about this. And I think we must. And I, I would imagine students want to know, and parents want to know, and teachers want to know. And it's our job to have a conversation.
I would say that I think we have, I mean, we have had conversations about within ourselves, the case study, which was a, a big, you know, conversation. So, I think we have had the conversation, but it's always, it's sort of stalled, I would say. And we need to kind of pick it back up.
Yeah, I agree with that. Thanks, Nicole.
I, I love the idea of the survey, of reaching out in some way. I don't know how feasible that is. I don't know. We also, I heard a couple of times people talking about how can we legally lead this discussion? How can we legally lead support? Because we've bumped up against that before. So, we need, we need some guidance in terms of what we can legally do. We need some guidance in terms of if we do proactive outreach, like a survey or, or a smaller survey, what are the guidelines for that if we can do that? And I love the idea of connecting with, at the, going to a couple of the sessions and also connecting with the region at MASC as well. Those are fabulous.
Do you think it might make sense to think about the possibility of another board workshop, perhaps sometime mid-year with just a single topic? Because that's a way for us really to have the time and the space to think about it. And if the superintendent thinks it's appropriate, that's also a time for us to learn from other folks in other districts, maybe, who would like to share whatever their lessons are. Or if there's somebody really wonderful at MCAS, maybe they would like to send somebody to help us understand, this is what you do when you want to have a conversation like this. This is what's happened around the state, and this is how you do it successfully. So.
So, taking notes fast and furiously. I'm hoping Amanda is as well. She'll watch the, she'll watch the tape tomorrow. So, a couple major things I'm hearing. One is the focus on listening, right? But we have to listen first before we act. So, I, I think we are all pretty good at that. I just think we have to be proactive, transparent listeners so that people really recognize that we're one giant set of ears trying to take in all, all sides of this discussion at the community level. The importance of letting people know that the school committee should and will take the lead on how you are working with the leadership team to redesign the school district in a sustainable way over time, not just responding to declining enrollment, but just, but responding to what college career and service readiness looks like five, 10 years out. And, and can we continue to provide that to students in Rockport and our own school district? It's not just about the, you know, the almighty declining enrollment. That, we know that that's, we know we will have a certain number of students that we have to educate. When we educate that certain number of students, are we doing that to the highest level of our ability as a small school district? So, that's, that's the focus for me ultimately. I want to eventually stop dwelling on the reality of the numbers, which I, from a budgetary standpoint, is difficult to do for me sometimes. But when we think about proactive, a five-year forward thinking, that's important. I love the idea, two things I'm hearing, the ad hoc committee task force concept and the concept of putting together some kind of targeted outreach. I tend to be a fan of focus groups more than surveys, but I, we can, we can debate the methodology later. I, I don't want you to minimize the importance of us doing the coffees and the casual, I call them no agenda Fridays because I listen to sports radio a lot in the drive home. So, like that no agenda Friday concept, that we are going to be sitting somewhere, you know, maybe we bring some commercial talking points, but generally speaking, we're there. I think that that's why these key actions are important to me, that you have five different levels of these actions, right? The reason I wanted to steer you in the direction of number five tonight is that's the most difficult work to do. That's the hard work. The rest of these are doable action items. So, I think that's good conversation that I, I need to wrap my head around, to Amy's point, what a, a school committee can and can't do legally, so that we don't step in it by accident. But how, how, can we move forward with focus groups targeted for a specific reason? Can we move forward with a legitimate standing ad hoc task force or committee? And what's the purpose of that group, right? And what does that look like? It, it's not just to discuss, you know, the potential, a potential override. It's really to discuss the viability of the district. Like, let's, let's put that in a much grander perspective. And then, to leverage the MASC opportunities that you all have, you know, it's just sensible stuff. So, let me kind of take these notes back and make some sense of them. And then, we'll come back at some time in the next meeting or two. And hopefully, I'll give you some answers about what we can, what we can do from an actionable standpoint. But I hope this kind of conversation is helpful. And I do think it's worth me exploring what that mid-year workshop could look like. And maybe it's more around this. Maybe by, by then, we will have some answers and some really loose format that we can dig into in a four, six, eight-hour day. Bless you. Does that make sense?
And the only other thing I would say is, this, to me, this is a multi-year conversation. This is not a one-and-done. This is not a just this spring and we'll figure it out. My sense is this is something that needs to start and have a structure and rigor that carries us through in a really positive and transparent way because it's about the entire community. No pressure here. It's a big deal.
Yeah, I kind of see this.
Reminder to have every time we have this conversation.
Yeah. And it's the start. It's the start. We get to be the people that start this conversation in a real lasting way. I like that.
You know, and I'll just close with, I'm going to say the same thing I said, maybe a little differently when I interviewed. The school district is the community's school district. So, yes, we, you speak for the, the, the group of people that don't have a vote or a voice technically. You also represent the constituents, and I work for all of you. So, at the end of the day, we'd like to sustain and build a school district that the community's proud of, but that really the community wants. And at some point, with your leadership, our leadership, really, the, the town's going to have to make a decision on what they, what they would like their school district to look like in the future. We have our own opinions, but we will be clearly part of that process. So, all right. So, I have a formal communication from the president of RESA to open negotiations. So, I just, you don't have to take a vote. I would just like the directive from the committee to say, yes, you have permission to sit down with the president, start to work out timelines, ground rules. And then, within a week or two, I'll come back to the two of you, because I think it's the two of you on that one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Please do.
And I'll, and I'll kind of set that ball in motion. I, I will tell you that the leadership team has already started the analysis of the contract. So, we are doing our side of the work, and I would suspect RESA's doing theirs. And then, we'll follow a similar format to, to what we did. And June has been really sick for like three days, so we did tell her to stay away. So, we do hope she's getting better. And I do know that the update we really have is we're, we're still waiting for the end-of-year reports to come from the town hall. Once the end-of-year report hits, I believe we will be ready for our first quarter. So, that would be July, August, September, right? So, now that we're in October, once we get that closeout, June will be able to come to you with the first update around the first quarter fund flow. So, and I will, I remember the last two meetings of the year last year where you want them in large-sized formats for yourself. And then, I'll just put the small format up on the screen. But I'll make sure when she gives me that, that we have it in a more digestible format that we've had some years. And that is all I have for you.
Now, we're on to school committee discussion. We are going to talk about the MASC conference, which we just talked about. Are there any decisions on who is going? Or is anyone going? Are you planning to go?
I, the only day that I can go is Friday with my work schedule. So, I don't know. It would be great if someone else wanted to go on the same day, but I know Friday might not be the ideal day. That's also the day that the region meetings are, and I found that to be really helpful last time. So, I don't know if anyone's interested in going. I'm happy to carpool, but, yeah.
If you know what other members would like to do, I, I could possibly go on the Wednesday, which had some of those workshops that addressed the number five we just talked about. But I'm, if, you know, I'm flexible too, so.
I have a real problem with PTO, so I won't be able to attend to the conference.
I, I enjoyed it last year, and I have things on my calendar that prevent me from going this year.
I'm also unable to attend this year. I have my nephew staying with me that week, so I'm unable to leave him. Thank you.
So, I think then that I'd.
Wednesday, Friday, and I'll be there all three days. So, what I'll do is I'll, I'll get probably, what I'll probably do is just get a ticket a day. That way, if something else happens, we'll, we'll have at least one more.
Okay, great. That's great. Those are two key days, it sounds like.
Yeah, I'll confirm that and double check.
Okay.
It's great.
And then, you had one more update, Madam Chair, that you were looking for from me? Is that correct? For the roof?
Oh.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I know that we had potentially community members, but definitely parents in the, in the building for parent-teacher night last week. And we did have, because we had a bad rainstorm that night, we had some more water in one of our hallways. And so, I know that people were asking, you know, good or bad municipal construction happens on a very slow, slow timeline. So, I just want to give a quick timeline update on where we are just so that the public hears it. But so, in case you get phone calls or emails or questions from community members or parents, you can, we can talk about that. So, this is the shortest version I could give you, so I apologize. But during last year, in response to substantial water leaks at the middle high school, as you know, we hired a contractor to complete a waterproofing project of the exterior walls on the gym and music sections of the building. So, if you're looking at the main entryway, that's to the left side. That was completed in July. That just cost just over $5,000, and the district did cover that cost. That came with a 10-year warranty. Now, if you, and it has held, we've gone down there multiple times with bad weather now, and all of that waterproofing had, in the exterior walls, has held. Bandroom looks fantastic. We've did a lot of gutting of the room. We put in new floors, new carpets, some soundproofing walls in the chorus room. So, there's been a lot of work in that lower level of the school. That probably should have been done anyway, but, you know, this necessitated that. In July, Tremco, which is the company we've contracted with, completed what's called a moisture analysis test of the middle high school roof, the front entry area, the cafeteria, and the gym area. Then, they completed masonry sealant work on the exterior wall near the gym, all the way down to the bandroom. And that did successfully stop all of these leaks in that particular area. Then, in August and September, they came back again. They need to continue to do additional moisture analysis testings at different times of the year and after different weather events, is the way I understand this. So, I'm learning a lot fast. So, that I never knew I needed to know. So, so they're doing, they've done, they've done that work to their credit. We do have additional roof concerns, including the chimney flashing near the front entry. There's a skylight at the front entry, and then the art wing and E-wing. E-wing is where some of those buckets and really bad water breaches were the night that we had high school back to school night. So, the art wing concern is related to the gym roof. Not that you care, but when I go up there, it's pitched, comes down to the gym, hits the art room, and there's this spot where the two roofs come together. And it's problematic. And then, the G-wing concern is related to the flashing leak around what's called the roof drain. And we're waiting for Tremco to send a final report and a cost estimate directly to town hall. And Town Administrator Vieira is waiting on that. We assume they'll have that in their hands by Friday. If not, they'll have it next week. And then, town hall has to, people have to hear this process. They have to put that job out to bid. They have to select a vendor. Then, they'll work with Kirk and our maintenance department to schedule the work. It will come with a 20-year warranty, but it is not going to be done within the next few days. That's a pretty long-term process. So, we don't have the actual estimate sitting at town hall yet. When that happens, it goes out to bid, and then the work will start whenever we get the work started. So, right now, it's buckets, it's m-. So right now, it's buckets, it's mops. Kirk was on the roof today with Flex Seal, if you've ever seen the commercial, like as seen on TV.
Yeah, it stops the aquarium leak.
Yeah, the aquarium leak, the bottom of a boat, that's supposed to be like the best stuff since sliced bread, or at least since duct tape. So, he was up there trying Flex Seal today around a particular spot where the, where the drain was problematic. So, as I said two weeks ago, we need to take care of the buildings we have, these are the buildings we have. So, that's the update I have for you.
Can I, I just wanted to ask, sort of like, like we were talking about with the playground, is this something that sort of going forward, we're talking about routine maintenance checks?
Yeah. So, a couple things happen. One, the once this work happens, it comes with a 20-year warranty and the ability to have some kind of built-in every-year update with it that company comes, because they certainly don't want to get hit on that warranty, right? So, that'll come with some kind of contract where they'll come in. And Mitch and I are having conversations about, you know, how that's going to roll out, and who's going to be in charge of making sure we have those kind of systems. I mean, I know there's a big project coming to you for the Town Hall. You know, you're building a new DPW building, so there's a lot of focus on municipal buildings right now. We're not unique, a lot of places have let them go over time, and it's unfortunate. So we're, in particular in the schools, we're just playing catch-up right now. And I will continue to play catch-up until we feel like we're finally sort of flatlined. But the roof, the story with the roof is, once this work's done, we should have a 20-year warranty on that particular building, and then I do want them to proactively look at the elementary school. And just like make sure we're in acceptable shape there. That's what I got.
That's a great update. Okay. Any other questions? Any other business? Okay. Well then I guess we're ready to adjourn? All adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.